Call meeting to order, Worthington City Council Regular Meeting, 5:30 PM, Monday, September 9th, 2024, City Hall, Council Chambers. Have everybody rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. We have no changes or additions to the agendas.
Move to close the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda, we got City Council Meeting Minutes of August 26, 2024. Water and Light Commission Meeting Minutes of September 3rd, 2024. Traffic and Safety Committee Meeting Minutes of August 27th, 2024. Case item, application for parade permit to Block Streets, Nobles County Library Welcome Week, and bills payable.
Move to approve.
Agenda, okay, motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, first case item, on sale Sunday liquor license application for the Cabanas Restaurant. Cabanas Restaurant submitted an application for an on sale and Sunday liquor license application that was shown in Exhibit 2. The fee is $3,200 per year and be prorated at $2,400 for the period of October 1st, '24 through June 30th, 2025, at which time it will renew for the license period of one year from July 1 through the following June 30th. All required fees, paperwork, and background check has been received and completed. Council action is requested to approve the on sale and Sunday liquor license application for the Cabanas Restaurant.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next item is the third reading of the proposed ordinance to amend Title 15 of City Code for the PUD Amendment Number 14. This is Glenwood Heights, 2nd and 3rd Edition. As time and place for the proposed reading, a copy of the complete ordinance was provided in your August 12th, 2024 Council Agenda. Council action is requested to give a third reading and subsequently adopt the proposed ordinance.
Move to approve third reading.
Second.
Okay, a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next item is a budget amendment for contract services for existing accounting software migration. Our finance staff is requesting council's approval to do a 2024 budget amendment to adjust the equipment revolving schedule for contract services to migrate our existing accounting software in preparation for the purchase and implement of the new ERP Pro 10 software in 2025. Our current software will need to be updated and migrated to the cloud in preparation for this new software package. The Worthington Public Utilities Departments are also converted to the ERP Pro 10, and this will allow us to integrate the two systems without having to manually enter the information. Discussions with Representative Tyler Technologies. It's the provider of our software, and we quoted a price of $28,495 for these services. We'd like to propose adjusting the ERS balances and borrowing from the following items. The 2024 ERS replacement balance of $16,500 for microfilm storage, which will not need to be completed in the near future. And our server replacement cost for 2025 came in under budget by $6,000. This gets us within $6,000 of the cost, which can be accomplished through our other 2024 budget line items that will not be expended in 2024. Exhibit 3 is our quote from Tyler Technologies to contract with the migration services or existing financial software. Council action is requested to allow staff to adjust the ERS balances and enter into a contract for migration services and amend the 2024 budget for the purpose of the preparation of the new software next year.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next item is to transfer funds from the spending plan to Tax Increment Financing District 7, Darlington 3rd Edition. City Council transferred $2,329,478 of unobligated funds in TIF 7 to the spending plan in December 2022. Funds in the spending plan may be used to providing improvements, grants, loans, interest rates, subsidies, or assistance in any form to private development consisting of the construction or substantial rehabilitation of buildings or ancillary facilities, which will create or retain jobs in the state, including construction jobs, so long as the private development commences no later than December 31st, 2025. The city undertook the North Homestead Utility Improvement Project to provide sanitary sewer and water services to property on the east side of North Homestead during the 2023 construction season. TIF 7 funds had always been designated as a funding source for this long planned project. Projects been finalized, and the total cost was $1,072,574.77. Staff is requesting that council transfer this amount, $1,072,574.77, from the spending plan back to Tax Increment Financing District 7 and approve the resolution attached as Exhibit 4. The remaining balance in the spending plan will be $1,256,903.23 following the transfer. Council action is requested to approve the transfer of funds and pass the attached resolution.
One or two, is that one or two actions that need to take place, or can that be done in one?
One, prove it and pass the resolution.
This is basically the formality set by Ellers and Associates now that we, in order to do transfers, we need to document them.
Yes, and document it with the resolution and document that we are, in fact, moving money from one fund to another, yes.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second, okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Just to further comment on this, while we have committed funds to a couple of projects from the spending plan, none of them have come to fruition at this point, so we have not spent any money out of the spending plan. Next item is New Tech Development Soil Mitigation Assistance. Worthington Economic Development Authority approved the sale of Lot 1, Block 1 and Lot 1, Block 2 of the Worthington Bioscience Industrial Park, 3rd Edition, to NTRA Properties LLC, which is New Tech, on May 13th of this year. Buyer subsequently undertook a geotechnical investigation, and soil borers noted the presence of unsuitable soils throughout the proposed building footprint. The geotechnical engineers have recommended that unsuitable soils be excavated and replaced. The unsuitable soils may extend to a depth of six feet below grade. It's difficult to specifically know the exact quantity of soils that would need to be excavated, as the soil profile may change throughout the site of the proposed building. Some locations may require more excavation and some less. New Tech's contractors provided an estimate that if the entire building site, and I'm talking just the building, not parking lot or other areas, would require excavation, if it would require an excavation to a depth of approximately six feet, the overexcavation quantity is approximately 7,000 cubic yards, and the estimated structural backfill is approximately 9,300 tons of material. The estimated cost is $213,000. City's efforts to mitigate soil conditions at the site, should we choose to move forward, we are requesting that it be contingent on requiring the buyers, NTRA LLC, having American Engineering and Geotechnical Consultants performing geotechnical observation and oversight during excavation procedures, so that they can dictate as the excavation is going on if more or less depth or excavation is required. Council action is requested to approve the soil mitigation assistance.
So essentially, we're assuming that if the full six feet is needed, that this is a worst-case scenario, the 213.
Correct.
Based on, based on the boring samples that said that there were some soils that need to be mitigated.
We have had several discussions regarding this. None of us were aware that there were unsuitable soils out there. We're not even sure why or how they came there. My amateur working theory is that perhaps at one time that may have been a slough or wet area and got filled in when they dug the original ditch for County Ditch 12 back, I don't know, 180, 100 years ago, when they did that, and they just filled it in with muck that they excavated for the new ditch, and which has since been relocated anyway. But part of our discussion was, city owns this site. It's gonna have to get fixed, whether now or another development in the future.
Amy?
So, we're providing assistance, are we paying for all of that?
We are, we are paying for what would be excess excavation beyond what would normally be needed to put up the building. So, the building generally is excavated four feet or so around the perimeter to allow for the frost depth of footings, and maybe a little bit under the building, inside the, that would be inside the building. This development will also have an internal crane system, so there'll be some larger columns and pads, footing pads, inside the building. Now, if you were just doing a column for a crane inside the building, you wouldn't have to go very deep, because it's, you don't have to worry about frost protection inside. So, there is a additional depth, but what we worked on was determining what they would have normally had to dig out if they were just building on a suitable site, and this is for the additional over, what I refer to as overexcavation.
Basically, the way we looked at it on the subcommittee was, we have lots for sale. Would anybody go out there and build on it, they would need the mitigation done. So, basically, if we don't, we have an unsellable lot that we're gonna have to excavate at some time to make sellable again. So, this way, it puts it to just the footprint of the buyer that wants to use that lot and just the need for the construction in that area up to that good point. And that's why having American there gives it the stop point to know that, okay, we're past that layer, we look good now.
Any other questions, comments?
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next item is budget amendment to acquire a trailer to use for election purposes. Staff is requesting council's approval to do a 2024 budget amendment to adjust the equipment revolving schedule coming out of our election fund for the purchase of a trailer used in transporting and storing the election equipment. We are proposing to use, to adjust the ERS balance in the election equipment. The replacement balance currently sits at $44,000, and we would, the new trailer is $7,215. That would leave a balance in that fund of $36,785. Currently, we store all of our election equipment for our polling places in all of our precincts, stored in the public works garage. Every election, public works folks go pick it up, put it in trucks, transport it around, set it, leave it there. What we're proposing is to have a permanent enclosed trailer that it would just stay in and would be parked securely in one of our indoor storage areas. And then, at election time, we just hook up to the trailer and move it to the different polling places and...
And the big thing is, is if it rains, we have to borrow the county's trailer to haul this stuff, so it doesn't get wet. So, there's been a couple times in the last couple of years, we've had to go borrow their trailer, enclosed trailer, and we just think we should have our own and put it in there. They don't have to worry about it getting wet or whatever, so, because normally, we just hold it in and open one time.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, my last item is a discussion concerning the proposed 2024 tax levies collectible in 2025. Attached as Exhibit 5 is a copy of the current resolution approving the proposed city Worthington tax levy of $8,479,206 that was presented at last Wednesday's council work session. This amount breaks down to an operating levy of $7,386,917 and special tax levies of $1,092,289. The proposed levy represents a 16.85% increase over 2024. The proposed levy is an amount not to exceed, but may be lowered, but not raised for final levy certification in December. Some key items to consider before we pre-certify. All three union contracts are up for renewal, so the cost of living increase is not known at this time, even though a factor is budgeted in the preliminary budget. State's health insurance increase is not known at this time, but we have a 12% increase built into the budget as presented. City staff has run two other scenarios, one at a 30% increase in health insurance and one at a 50% increase. If the renewal comes in at 30%, this will result in additional amount of $204,720 or 2.8% additional levy. If the renewal came in at 50%, that would result in additional levy amount of $432,206 or just a hair under 6% of the additional levy. Council action is requested to provide and not to exceed levy amount or percentage to pre-certify that would be presented at the special council meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, September 10th, at noon. So, I don't know if you've had time to think about this and consider it over the past several days, and what council's thoughts are.
Chad. One thing that, I guess, I brought up, we've always dropped from our pre-cert. We've always done it plenty high. If we're gonna take serious consideration and look at the possibility of an arena, knowing what the bonding schedule looks like, is it dumb of us to not keep our pre-cert high? Take the possibility of looking at creating a reserve fund for that and putting money into that in light of not knowing if it's going to happen or not, but having that to be ahead of the game in doing it? We pre-certed last year and saw a 6% city tax rate drop, and we had an increase. Do we take and make sure we have funds in there to create and start a reserve fund that could possibly be used for that, to get ahead of the game, knowing that if it doesn't, it can be utilized and put back anywhere? We've seen tax drop in city rate. We're looking at advancing and doing things in the community, knowing that it's going to cost. We know that. But by getting ahead of the game a little bit, by even a quarter, a third of the year, a quarter of the year, to do that, those bonds, should that arena happen, would be two, if not three, years out. Correct, Deb? So, to just get a reserve fund built for that, even if the vote doesn't happen in this calendar year, to decide to do that or not, to have that, to take a look forward and say, "We are preparing ourselves for the fact that we could enhance this community by putting an arena up now or in the next couple of years to come." I just want to be sure that if we're gonna, if all we're looking to do, in my opinion, what has been done in the past several times is, "Let's just get it as low as we can, because we want to look like we're saving every single penny in the world to, you know, not tax and do everything." That was the mentality that got us in the stagnant mode in this community of nothing happening, nothing getting caught up, and nothing progressing. If we build a reserve for the knowledge that we're still looking to keep progressive movement in this community and grow and enhance, do we build a reserve fund for the next project? Knowing what it could be without having a decision yet. I think anywhere 100,000, 200,000, if it would be possible, to put into reserve fund is not a bad move.
It's always better to be proactive than reactive. Anyone else have any questions?
Right now, if we pre-certified at the 16.85, and health insurance came in at a ridiculous amount, we would be cutting what we are proposing at this point. Other, whether it comes from park equipment, street improvements, expanded staffing in a couple of our departments, that's, those would have to be adjusted to stay within the pre-certification amount.
We do know that we, in there, there's park equipment that is not, there's nothing in danger in that park equipment. There's nothing that is used up in that, I mean, that alone is $100,000 and more that could be utilized for those things. So, there are things in there that we know that very well could drop that pre-cert down. All I'm asking is take the consideration of looking when we finalize certification in December. But if we don't leave ourselves enough room to do that on the pre-cert, then the tough decisions will have to be made on cuts and things like that. We have a lot of unknowns that are big dollars in what is calculated in a pre-cert right now. We have a couple months' window of time to find out what those numbers are. The assumable tax, that won't come until late October.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll still give us a solid month of discussions on what to do with that. We saw what that did last year, we were able to drop considerably. We wait for the insurance. Could be 30, could be 50, it could be 12.
Or less.
Or less. Find wood and knock on it hard, that, that those things are there. But to just worry about cutting ourselves down, I don't want to do that ahead of time, because it is a big decision, it is, and there are plenty of questions to be asked about it and things that need to happen, but that's a big step for this community, and I want to be able to build a reserve, whether it happens now or possibly in the next year or two. And it would get ahead of bonding to build up enough of a reserve to have a cushion going into it. I think, my opinion, if it wasn't of interest of thought, we would have never gone to the exploration amounts that we have. So, the fact that we went to the amount of exploration that we did showed enough interest by a council that is going to change very little that I think we should look forward to what we've been looking forward at.
Anyone else?
Deb, am I correct, 72,000 roughly is a point? So, I say we either pre-cert at 18 or 16.85. I'll throw it your way, knowing that there's things to do, but that would add roughly 100,000. If we did 18, 16.85, leaves it as it is. Everything, everything can be adjusted by December 14th, 15th, whatever that is, the 9th, sorry, the first meeting. Has to be done at our first meeting, can't wait until the second one. Everything can be adjusted by then.
This is what always makes it difficult, is we have to pre-certify in September with a handful of unknowns that we are, have little control over, but have to pay, that we won't know for hopefully in a month, and sometimes it doesn't come until late October, early November, before we have all of our, all of the information we have, just what our obligations are to set our budget.
Anyone?
I would say it's a good idea.
For the short term, I do, I do like the amount of wiggle room that we would, we would get with that additional percentage.
The thing to remember is, everything, this is pre-cert. Everything gets adjusted in the December meeting, and it gives us two months of discussion, exploration, to do. And public opinion, because you'll get it.
You're right.
My feeling though is if we, if we increase the percentage, the public is gonna say, "Boy, that's really high." If we go with, if it goes, you know, published at 18%, and I think we're gonna get a lot of feedback real quickly.
That's $100,000 in a eight, eight and a half million dollar budget, excuse me, levy. I get it, you hear the number, it's 100,000.
And on the hikerink, I think we need to get the soft cost in there, and I think we need to do a feasibility study on what our operation cost is gonna be. We have to know our true cost.
I think there's a ton of that that is going to be discussed and can be discussed. But again, I think the fact that we've gone to the exploration amount of what we have, it is of real consideration. So, if it's of real consideration, let's really consider it. There are plenty of projects this year and next year that if it's decided that it's not a workable project, that reserve fund could be used for many things, to take 1.25% off of next year's levy, or whatever.
Yeah, I don't, if you put money, want to start putting money into a reserve fund for a potential future project, if that project doesn't go forward, those funds are allocated back into the, a future levy to reduce or take on a different project with funds that you already have put into a reserve account.
We could find out that at 18, 16.85, whatever it is, that in a month and a half, we could reduce 4% off of this levy right now, which we did easily last year. And we increased budgets last year by doing that. We bumped our street 250?
No, 3, no, 400.
400, 400,000 dollars last year. $400,000 last year, we bumped the streets and kept that this year. We bumped the streets and kept that this year.
Plus another 300,000. And we're just recertifying, so we're just asking for a percentage increase.
Yeah.
This is. So you were saying 18%?
I say we can go down from there. That gives us the cushion to not have to ultimately right now say we would ax this or that. That's all.
Yeah, the, the pre-certification is a number mandated by the state and sets the ceiling or the limit as to what the final tax can be. We, we have historically, at least in my experience here, pre-certified rather high. And then over the coming next couple of months is when we start to get firm information, firm numbers on some of our renewals and then we start bringing it back down to what our final budget ultimately is.
Well, this buys us time to sharpen our knives and to be able to cut later.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's always better to have a cushion instead of all of a sudden now you're having to take away from something you don't have and fall short. Any other comments?
Well, we need, we need direction because we have to prepare, prepare all of the paperwork necessary for tomorrow's meeting. So you need a motion at what percentage? Yes, yeah. I move that we make the motion increasing it to 18%.
Second. Okay, all right. We have a motion and a seconded. All in favor, any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll have one case item. It's a Department of Transportation Aeronautics grant agreement. The Worthington City Council at their February 22nd, 2024 meeting entered into an agreement with the firm of short Elliot Hendrickson, Incorporated due design work for replacement of the terminal building roof and heating unit at the Worthington Municipal Airport. This work was contingent on receiving an FAA grant to provide any eligible funding. Staff has since received the FAA grant and has implemented it. As standard procedure, MINDOT, Aeronautics has authorized the companion grant, Exhibit 1 in your packet, to fund part of the associated costs of these airport improvements. The cost breakdown for this roof project is as follows. The federal committed money is of $142,155. The state is paying $72,222 and the grantee, City Worthington, pays $35,465. The total project's cost to not exceed $249,842. Council action is requested to accept the MINDOT grant and pass the accompanying resolution.
Comments, questions?
This isn't anything set by us, correct?
No, no.
I mean, it's, it's, it's the formality.
Yep, it's just, this is, and actually, the state actually picked up more than they were going to on this because in the FAA's infinite wisdom, they only covered 62% of the like roof. And the state actually came back and picked up about 40% or something like that, or 30 some percent. So it was more than I thought it was going to be. But we do have the funds available for our portion and it needed to be done because it was leaking and the heating unit wasn't working. So I mean, it's just basically our AIP funds that we get every year.
Is that, will that be completed this year yet?
Yeah, they're, it's about done.
I move to approve. Accept the M, MINDOT grant and pass the resolution.
We did approve the contract with the, with the contractors. And like I said, this is all just technical stuff. And the grant, the state grant always comes like two months after you get the federal grant. So I, I don't know why they do it that way, but it is what it is.
Did she get a second?
Yes. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, on to council committee reports. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
No report.
Chris?
No report.
No report.
Same.
Just a reminder, we're going to meet at noon tomorrow for a short meeting to pre-certify. And with our new website that is getting ready to roll out, I made the decision that all elected officials and department heads will have their photograph as part of the, on our website. So we're looking at, Christina's going to take care of this. Probably the next council meeting, we'll take portraits. Chest up. It'll be gone, okay, well, we'll catch. But we'll send out notices and reminders and then you can dress in coif, however you feel. My hair will look the same.
That was my look.
I might want to perk it right in the middle.
That's my part.
So.
Wide.
All right, thank you.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.